All right, so, thank you.
We're ready.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. The regular meeting of the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees is now called to order at 4:36 PM. You may join today's meeting in person or join via Zoom webinar. These links are accessible by visiting the College of the Desert homepage. We'll proceed with the roll call.
Student trustee Rubles. Trustee Sanchez Fulton. Trustee Meyer.
Present.
Trustee Perez.
Here.
Trustee Oden.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman.
Present. At this time, I'd like to ask trustee Perez if he could do the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
Thank you, trustee Perez. Moving on to item 2.01, confirmation of agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions to the agenda for May 22nd? Seeing none, the agenda stands as presented. Item 3.01, public comments requests addressed the Board of Trustees regarding special agenda items. Remote public participation is allowed and will be accepted in person by email to otp@collegeofthedesert.edu during the meeting and submitted for the record, or by using the Raise Your Hand function by joining the Zoom link. Pursuant to District Administrative Procedure 2345, each speaker will be allowed a maximum three minutes per topic. Fifteen minutes shall be the maximum time allotment for public speakers on any one subject regardless of the number of speakers at any one board meeting. At the discretion of a majority of the board, these limits may be extended. All comments must be submitted or brought forward prior to the end of the public comment section. Irene, do we have any public comments?
Good evening, trustee Kinnaman. We did not receive any public comment requests at this time for the special meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I would like to welcome Dr. Debbie D. Thomas, who is joining us as our facilitator for today's board retreat. Dr. D. Thomas brings a wealth of experience in California's community college system. Her career began in the K-12 sitting and transitioned into higher education at Riverside Community College District, where she led numerous leadership positions, including interim president of Norco College and interim vice chancellor of Student Services and Operations. She later served as superintendent president of Barstow Community College District until her retirement in 2017. Since then, she has remained actively involved at the state and national level, mentoring current and aspiring CEOs, facilitating accreditation and effectiveness teams, and supporting institutions in areas such as governance, DEI, and resource allocation. Dr. D. Thomas will now guide us through a review of the 2025 board self-evaluation results and facilitate our dialogue around the effective governance practices. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for asking ACCT to help you through this process, and I'm happy that they and you agreed that I could be the one to come here. So, thank you very much. And what I'd like to do is start with the PowerPoint. And we, it's, this seems really formal. I feel like I'm back in the classroom, you know, and it's not me teaching, okay? It's more of a dialogue, so I hope, I will go through an overview of the evaluation, and then I hope we can have some good conversation and you can all talk. So, do I need to turn this on? Or just, can I do that? Perfect. So, just a review, we're going to talk about three things before we get into the final activity, which is really how you demonstrate, one way that you'll be able to demonstrate that this was important to you. One way is, is taking the time to do what you're doing, having the evaluation, and then having the discussion, and then actually putting it to use and making changes as a result of it. Every evaluation process, the goal of it is to improve performance, and so that's what we hope comes out of the evaluation that you do of yourselves. So, the first thing we do, we're going to go through the evaluation itself and have a discussion, and then we're going to review ACCJC's most recent compliance requirements, which the three requirements were related to board governance. And then we're going to review best practices for high-performing boards, and then pull all of that information together to help set some board internal governance goals. Now, the first thing you're probably thinking is, well, we already set goals, and I have copies of them and copies for all of you also when we get to that part, because when you look at those, you'll understand the difference between what I'm saying about board internal governance goals and the board goals that you already set for basically guiding the institution, okay? So, everybody okay with that, if we go through this process? Okay, so, the evaluation, I'm going to point out at a high level some information as you, I think you all have a copy of it in front of you. If you can take it out, you'll probably want to refer to the pages that I am talking about, and then when we really get into the nitty-gritty discussion, you'll want it right in front of you. But this is high-level, just overview, and a lot of it is repeat, review, because many of you have been on the board and have had this experience before, but bear with while I just go through an overview. The first is that there are introductory pages, and one of the most important is page four, if you could go to that, which has the key findings for your institution. And remember, nobody said these things except you, okay? This is all just the board self-evaluation. All five of you participated in it, and it was a different time, and you have since accomplished one of the things that you said was most important, which was hiring a permanent president. So, I know, and you know, you're in a little bit different place in some of the areas, but we're still going to discuss what you said in the evaluation, and then you're going to have to decide what you still need to do something about and what you've already resolved, okay? So, highlights and summaries start on page five through 13, and we're going to, we're going to go through those, but I'm going to point out a couple of things. On page 11, if you could jump to that, you'll see that that you rank, you rank things pretty highly, okay? You, you, as a general rule, think that you are doing a pretty good job as trustees, because your average ratings for part one were 4.88, and for part two were 4.0. Oh, no, average ratings for all categories in the evaluation were, the lowest was 3.81, and that's on a five-point scale. So, if you were grading in a classroom, A, B, C, D, and F, then you ranked yourselves at, you know, pretty high. You're, you're at the B level, and on most of them, you were between B and A. And on some of them, everybody ranked them fives, and you'll see when we get into the discussion which items those were. On page 28, if you could skip to that real quickly, I want you to just take a look at that. We'll come back to it. But that's where the lowest rated items are, and you'll see that number 33, which refers to your code of ethics, is your lowest rated item, but again, that was a 3.0. That's pretty high for the lowest rated item, so you consistently, pretty much, you ranked yourselves pretty highly. And then the next item was 32, which referred to board roles and responsibilities, and again, 3.2, but it was the second lowest item in the whole evaluation. And then the third one, number 38, which was confidentiality, and that you ranked yourselves a 3.4. So, the three lowest items on the quiz, yes. 3.8. I mean, 3.4, I'm sorry.
Number 38, you're saying, I just want to be very clear for the record.
Yeah, is it not?
Is a 3.2?
I thought it was 3.4.
It was 3.2 in the report.
3.2.
Okay.
So, I just want to be very clear.
I just got it mixed up.
Number 32, board members understand and adhere to the roles and responsibilities, was a 3.40.
Okay, I reversed them.
And 38, the board maintains confidentiality privilege, 3.2. Thank you.
I just reversed them on my sheet, so that's correct. So then, I wanted to also point out charts. On page seven and eight, sorry to make you go back, but seven and eight has the charts where you ranked the items. You can see the 5.0s on there, okay? Number three, which referred to your board officers have clear responsibilities. You all agreed to that with a 5.0, and that number 12, you do a good job with your policy and your policy review, okay? And then on page eight, this is from part two of the, of the evaluation. There were a lot. Nine, 12, 13, 14, 15, 22, and 58 were all ranked 5.0, and those were from part two. Part one, you were ranking the whole board with respect to general principles of board governance, and part two, you were ranking yourselves as individual trustees, okay? So, you can see that this is one of the highest evaluations I've seen from a board, and generally, board evaluations are on the higher end. It's when you evaluate the president, sometimes they aren't. And I, I'm saying that as a joke, but, but it is true that this is a high evaluation. So, last thing I want to point out, on page nine, you can see that college operations and advocacy are high as categories. You ranked yourself very highly on those, and the, the board and CEO relationship and board leadership were ranked low. And we'll get into the individual questions so you can see what those actually are. But that, again, I repeat that you have a change in CEO leadership, so that, that could be affected. But, but for everything else, the board's the same. It is not a different board now, okay? So, if you look at the PowerPoint now, pages, part one of the survey, you can see it asks trustees to assess the board performance on key characteristics of effective governance, and those are listed in the parentheses. And that covers page 14 to 33 of your booklet. And then on part two, which asks trustees to reflect on your own performance, that's 34 to 43. And all of the items were ranked on a scale of one to five, with five being the highest. So, in that analysis, if you could go to page 14, just to get an overview of what occurs in each category analysis. And on that, page 14, and I'm going to look at it too, because I want to see the category. The first thing you see is the table. You see a little bit of text, and then you see a table. That table is there to show you what the items are, and then it's asked, it shows you the average scores, okay, of the trustees. The following two charts, if you look at those on the next page, okay, on page 15, the top chart shows you the average ratings for each item, which is just a chart of the top one, except it doesn't have what the items are, okay? And then the bottom one shows you how the trustees individually rated each item. No names or anything, but one, trustee one is always trustee one. Trustee two is always trustee two throughout the whole report, okay? So, you can see that, that there, there are some trustees, as you go through these pages, there are some trustees who consistently ranked items five. And there, there were two who consistently did it, and a third one who, who did it often, but sometimes that score was a four. And there's nothing wrong with that. That just means that you think you're doing a really good job, okay? So, then there were comments, and most of the time, there are far more comments than these. You only had these five, so I went ahead and put them in the PowerPoint, and we don't need to discuss them now, but you'll want to take a look at them. Most of the time, when it says board comments, it says no comments, okay? But these five were written in there. So then, we come to page 44 and 45, which are the open-ended questions. And those ask you, and you'll want to look at those, we're going to come back to them, but you'll want to look at them. The, you cited passion and commitment to the college, and you did that a few times in the survey, and that's, that means we can work out anything else, you know? I had a quote at the bottom of my emails, my whole, beginning of my administrative career till I changed it to one on justice, but it was that our public will forgive us mistakes in judgment, but not in motivation. So, if your heart's right, if you're trying to do the best thing for the college, and you make a mistake, or something happens, and anything goes wrong, or people disagree, at least you know you were trying to do the best thing for the college. And it's encouraging that you all said that about each other. So, I think that's a, that's a really good thing for this board to hold on to. And then, then the question was asked, what are the major accomplishments of the board in the past year? And you cited that increased enrollment and higher accountability were accomplishments, and then there were other things listed there. And then areas that the board could improve. You cited an interest in more educational opportunities, improving communication, and building cohesiveness as a board, okay? There were various responses under improving the meetings. We'll look at those. And then on the last one, it was what are three to five issues you feel the board should make its priorities for the coming year? And I'd like you to look at that page, and I did actually do a screen print of it and highlighted some of the areas. But what I want you to see is that you see under priority one, the first bullet, that was the first priority for trustee one. Under priority two, that was the second priority for trustee one. And it stays that way all the way down until you get to priority four and five, because the directions were, give us three to five, and one of the trustees gave three. Followed the directions and gave three, but other trustees gave five. So, in those two categories, there are only four responses, okay? I just wanted to make sure you understood that. But the first bullet is the same trustee in every category until one of the trustees drops out at four and five, and it's totally anonymous who the trustees were, okay? So, the highlighting that you see is how I grouped them together, and I grouped them together, as you see on the screen now. I kind of, permanent president, those were said by everybody, either as a priority one or two, hire a permanent president. You did it, so you already accomplished your first priority. And then you talked about five, there were five responses that had something to do with a focus on students. And if, if you look at my highlighting, you can tell, increasing safety for students, I put in that. So, the green areas that I have on the chart on the board were the ones I grouped into that theme. You could have different opinions, because it's not rocket science, but this was just, I wanted to get an idea of what, as a general rule, you were thinking of as priorities for the upcoming year. And the reason this is so important is because that should influence your internal governance goals too. You have, five of you, or five responses had something to do with board internal governance. And I cheated here, because the, on the page right before that, at the bottom, there was one response. It wasn't in the priorities, but it was actually in the response above it for what are three to five? No, what, the question was, what are one or two most important changes, you think? And the person wrote, "A collective commitment to doing what is in the best interest of the district and not individual interests or biases." And so, that was pretty strong, and I included that as a governance and board improvement goal. And then, again, going back, you, there were several that related to the strategic plan, or at least I hope they do. Some of them were about buildings and facilities, and they should be in your facilities plan, and then there should be reference probably in your strategic plans, so I lumped them in with the strategic planning. Fiscal security, which is one of the most important jobs of the board, was in there, and by three people. And management stability was, two people had that as, and I thought, the way it was worded, it went beyond just the president, so I had it a separate category. And then one person wrote about auxiliaries, and I wasn't sure what they meant, so I kept that as a separate category, okay? So, what we'd like to do now, I would like to, if it's okay with you, stop me talking and have you, if you can look back at, I think we've covered most of the introductory and the overview, but if we could look at some of the items and have you talk a little bit about those, and, and if you think it's still true, if you, if you don't agree with it now, that would be a good discussion for the board to have, and it will help us lead to what we want to do at the end of the day. So, Dr. Kinn, I almost said Joel. Dr. Kinnaman, would you like to take over, like, talking about some of it, or do you?
Okay, well, I, I think that what we can do is defer to individual trustees and determine if they feel any different about what we did when we did our self-evaluation based on the results, or even sit.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, trustee Meyer, do you?
Well, I've got, I've got to agree, the select a new president. We've accomplished that. I've got to agree with you. It's a very good overview, and very informative of this. It's, I was curious, when I saw this the first time, of how we fit in with other organizations have gone through this, and you've said we rank fairly high.
You, you do, it is high when, I would especially say the number that got so, all fives. I haven't seen that very often, and there were quite a few, especially in the part two. But they're generally in between the three and four range, and yours was closer to the four, and on a lot of items, you were above the four.
Yeah, but I don't really have any question or statement. It's just, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Trustee Perez, do you? Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Okay. Trustee Oden?
It would be interesting to me to see a comparison of these results with the previous results. It's no question that the board members are It's no question that the board members are knowledgeable. And I think we'll see that consistency in previous and in this one. Doesn't really address the recommendations. We think everybody knows what they should do.
Yeah, absolutely. A friend who was a trustee for a long time that I do workshops with has a slide that he puts up that says there are three kinds of trustees, those who know, like, what they're supposed to do, those who don't know, and those who know but don't care. And sometimes, you know, and it's not even don't care, but forget sometimes, or just have something they want to do more. So I think it's, as in any time you're leading what you're doing, you have to stop and check, you know? Am I doing, what's the reason I'm doing this? Is this the right thing? Is this my role? And I do think that it's true that you all have, I think there's one person who's a relatively new trustee, and one who has been on the board and come back. And then everybody else has quite a bit of experience on the board. And so, you know, I'm sure you've been to a lot of training, so it's not a question of knowing, but it's a question of sometimes doing, you know, what needs to be done. And it's one of the hardest things about being a trustee, because you're the ones who have to hold yourself accountable. And it's not even fair to put it on the president, because you're in a paradox relationship, because the president's an important member of the team. And if the president and the board don't get, you know, aren't on the same page, it's detrimental to the institution. But it's still a hierarchy. The president's hired by the board, you're the boss. As a unit, you're the boss of the president. And so to ask the president to hold the board accountable, you can't do. It's the board that has to hold itself accountable, so it's very difficult to do. And a lot of times, what I hear is, well, the voters hold the board accountable. Yeah, they do, but how many years does it take before the board? And a lot of times, voters don't really know what's going on, unless it gets to such an issue that it's in the media and everybody knows that it's a problem. So all of that is to say, if falls on you. And that's why it's so important that you do these. And it's so important that, I talked about that the scores are pretty high. And the reason I did that is because I think it means that you need to pay a lot of attention to the ones that are low, because most of them are high, okay? And it's great to pat yourselves on the back for, we don't do that enough in education, I don't think, we don't celebrate the great things that we do. But in this case, in an evaluation, to grow and to learn and to improve, even though they're still pretty high, some people thought there was a problem. And so it should be talked about by the board. So since everybody has at least responded to that, how about if we go look at the high items and the low items on page seven, okay? And then we can talk about those. If you could just review the top chart, and these are from part one, these are the highest rated items, can we look at those and see if anything jumps out at you that you don't agree with? Is there anything that you don't think this board does a really good job at? And still does?
I can speak to my experience with item forty-five. Almost immediately after coming onto the board, I did go to the CCLC conference. And as a new board member, I learned a lot. And not only in the sessions, but outside the sessions, I could talk to very experienced board members from many different colleges and just learn from their experiences. So and then I learned that we can get certification doing that. And right now, I'm eighty-seven percent on that.
Awesome.
As I also went to the CCLC for the new board training. Having served on the board from 2012 to 2020, I needed that refresher course on education. And the nuances, the new, a lot of our board policies, APs, BPs are being changed every year. So the training is phenomenal. I just got back from finishing up the effective board of trustees. And I know all of us, as a board member, I know that we want to complete that as an effective board member.
That's awesome.
So it's phenomenal to go through the training, because it's a refresher. And as an educator myself, so I just want to applaud your years in education. So, you know, we're lifelong learners. I think our board is very dynamic, and I think that we, all of us, oh my goodness, bring so much to the table, to the board.
That's awesome, thank you. And I just want to say about CCLC and the effective governance that you're doing, that's a great goal for a board goal, because you're already partially through it. And if you say you all want to complete it, that's a great internal governance goal. So you might want to remember that when we get to that part, okay? Anybody else see anything in here?
Yeah, that stands out to me as well, because when I came on the board, I come from the public sector as an elected official, but in education, it's different. Quite different.
Yes.
And learning the nuances that are different. One being, in the public, non-education sector, everything is urgent. You have to address this, and you address it now, and you're accountable for that.
Yeah.
This process is slow.
Yes.
Very slow.
It is.
And it's even slower than that. But it happens.
Right.
It happens. So learning those differences was really important and valuable for me.
That's great, thank you. Trustee Perez, did you want to add anything? Did you see anything in the top chart? Okay, well, then we can move to the bottom chart. Do you see anything in there?
Yeah, yeah, not necessarily in the top chart, is it my mic on? Okay. But I do think that we've made great strides as it relates to the board considering and respecting a minority opinion. It's just my own personal outlook. I think a lot of what came out of, you know, the ACCJC's recommendations were of the previous board. And I think this board, I think, respects opinions, I think, a lot more. And there seems to be respect amongst the trustees, or so.
Oh, okay, great. So the recommendations were based on a previous board, and how many are changed for the?
The two.
Two? Two?
Me and trustee Meyer.
Great. So you'll want to, of course, address that in your response to ACCJC, okay?
I was going to say for item twenty-four.
Sure.
Now that we have a new superintendent and president, we can zero that out and start over.
Yeah.
You know, within the past, and issues, and now we've got, what, one week? Ten days under our belt? Three days. So.
Yeah, and that's kind of a hard question after three days, because there's a honeymoon period in there.
But I know my relationship with the president is, I'm always checking with him on where I am as a board member. If I'm overstepping my bounds, if I'm saying the wrong thing, I'm stepping the wrong way. Not only for him, but also for the board. Remember, you said it, it's a collective supervisory, it's not an individual supervisory.
Absolutely.
So if somebody, I've not been asked this, how's the president doing? I shouldn't say anything, because that's representing the board, and I don't know what the board's focus on that is. So I have to be careful with how I act.
Yes, and we're getting into communications a little bit, and you do have a policy on that, and we'll want to talk about that, because that's a best practice, and I'm glad you're thinking about that. But directing the work of the president, absolutely. Having an opinion about how the president does, but not necessarily expressing that to anyone. But each of you will have individual opinions, and then collectively, you'll come together and you'll do an evaluation on the president, and it's private.
And that evaluation becomes our collective opinion.
Absolutely, yes. Because what usually happens in a president's evaluation is the president does a self-evaluation, and the board, each individual, evaluates the president. And then you come together as a board, and you talk about your individual evaluations. And then collectively, you agree on what you're going to actually say to the president and put in the report that will then go into the president's personnel file. And all of this is done in executive session in California. In some states, it's not, it's in public. So board evaluations are different. As you can see, we're doing this in public, because you're public officials, really. And the Open Meetings Act demands that this be done in public, but not so with the president. So in your meeting with the president, you will all speak, or you'll speak before that, and then direct your board chair to handle the meeting when you bring the president back in. It varies a little bit from district to district, but that's a general gist of how the president's evaluation will happen. And then that's the formal, how's the president doing? And then usually, you come out of that executive session and just make a statement about, you know, the continued work of the president in the district. Okay? So thank you, that's a great, great point. Anything else in your lowest rated? Can you look at three point oh? Board adheres to a code of ethics or standards of practice. And that's the lowest in the whole, this would be like a one point oh in a lot of evaluations. So this is one you want to look at. It means more than one person, it's not just an outlier, because to get it down to a three point oh with five people, it can't be just one person statistically, okay? So more than one person thought there was an issue with the board adhering to your code of ethics and standards of practice, which, by the way, your policy is awesome.
I rewrote it, I think.
In collaboration with Eileen.
And the reason I'm kind of asking you to look at this and talk about it a little bit is this is also what came up in the ACCJC evaluation. And so this is something, the board thought it, and the board thought it, you guys. This is you and your evaluation of the board. And so the evaluating team, when they came out, also verified it. Go ahead.
So that was an old board. So we were newly elected when the ACCG, that was the old board.
For when ACCG, but it's said again.
Here, too.
Yeah, in this. And this was when it was this board. You might have been talking about things that happened in the past, but only you know that. So I think it's good to talk about it a little bit, okay? Especially as we get into goal setting, if there's anything you want to do after we talk about best practices of high-performing boards. And it sounds to me like the work that you're doing and you've committed to individually to become a high-performing board, that that's a goal that you have. And so as we talk through best practices, which I'm sure aren't going to be anything new to you, but it's just a repeat of some things, you'll want to think about, well, do we need to work on this? Is this something that we might want to set a goal for ourselves to demonstrate that we can improve in this area? Once you, I'm going to show you some sample board internal governance goals from two other colleges that I just went and found and brought tonight. And I didn't, I started as a teacher, so I know if you give people stuff ahead of time, they don't pay attention to what you're talking about. So I'm going to give it to you, Irene printed it for me, and she's going to help when it's time to, when we're talking about that topic. So when we get to it, and you decide what the issue is that you want to work on, then we can have a discussion about what a draft goal might look at like. But a lot more work will be done, because when you actually vote on your goals, it'll be at your regularly scheduled board meeting. But tonight is the beginning of that conversation, okay?
So Dr. Thomas, I was going to say, it would be interesting if my colleagues agree on these that are lowest rated, if like six months from now, we reassess where we think we're at on these types of items, and see if there's been a shift in where the board is.
Exactly. And when you do next year's evaluation, I think comparative data is essential. If you do it with the same, like, you do an ACCT evaluation, and you can compare what it was before. But it's hard when you start so high to see improvement. So the improvement would be more in what you say in the comments and what you acknowledge that as examples and specifics about why you answered the questions that way. So I really encourage you to do that when you do your next evaluation, okay? Okay, so let's look at part two of the high and low, and that's just right on the next page. And if we could do the same thing, does anything jump out at you in the highs as, yeah, this is true, or no, I don't think this is true?
I find it curious that thirteen reads high, but it talks about ethics and standards, and then the previous one ranked so low.
And that is funny, because you know what that means. Everybody thinks it's somebody else. Because the top part, you're ranking the board as a whole, and the part two, you're ranking yourself as an individual. And the trustees all thought, yes, I'm doing a good job on that. But as a whole, you didn't think the board was doing a good job, okay? Very good point.
And I can remember answering number twenty-two and thinking, we all do a fairly good job of connecting. However, I don't know who's connected to who on the board. That's one thing that's missing, you know, who are you connected with?
That's a great goal, again, to be organized about your work with the community. And I would also encourage you to make sure the president's a part of that. And that the president is the face of the college, and that the board members are the face of the community. And so if I can say it like that, even though it's not exact, but you're also the face of the college, but together, you're a pretty powerful team, okay? And it really matters to the institution when they see that kind of a relationship between the CEO and the board. It's very encouraging to the institution, it brings the climate and morale up. Anything else?
At any given time, all five of us might be meeting individually with somebody in the community, yes, with the same person.
Yeah, you didn't know it.
Observation.
That's a really good point. And so you guys, that could be something you really try to work on, because I would imagine you're all pretty connected with, and it might be some of the same people, so, good point.
We just need the same talking points, right?
What's that?
We just need the same talking points, right?
Yeah, exactly, that, too. Yeah, you got to make sure you're all saying the same thing, on the same page, when you're representing the board, at least. And I say that when you're representing the board, but whether you know it or not, you're always representing the board. And even when you're not trying to, you are. And when you're on campus and people see you, you're a trustee before you're anything else. So it's important to remember that, okay? How about the one on property acquisition and management? Is that an issue? Three point seven five is not a bad score, but just in relationship to the other scores, it's low.
I think it's more historical.
Okay.
There's been, I'll say, conversation about our West Valley campus, but that's all said and done, and everything's going well.
Wonderful.
There was also some controversy of location of Roadrunner Motors, and that's all said and done, and in the past. And I think it's more related to historical than it is ongoing today.
Wonderful. See, and that's why we have this discussion, because those are points that... See, and that's why we have this discussion because those are points that, and the college usually drafts the response to accreditation, but those are things the board will want to make sure are, are in that response. Okay? Anything else on strengths and weaknesses? So, do you want to look at?
Number 18?
Oh, go ahead.
Number 18? I've never been through one, so I don't know what to expect.
18?
The President's Superintendent Evaluation Tools and Processes. Being a new trustee, I've never been through the process with that.
Yeah.
It's still to really.
Yeah. For, for some of you, that's true. So, that was maybe based on, but this is you guys answering this question. So, it might've been just that you didn't have a good understanding of it or, or has there, do you have, and I didn't look at that policy. I looked at a lot of your policies, but I didn't look at the president's evaluation policy. Is that, do you feel that's pretty strong? I mean, do, let me just say.
I read it, but I have no basis of.
Comparison.
Knowledge on that to say where it fits.
Well, one thing that you have as an advantage over community colleges in most other states is that you have CCLC and you subscribe to CCLC. So, you have really good policies and they keep them up, they update if there's a law change. In other states, every college fends for themselves. They have to keep up on the law. Their policies look very different unless they, you know, borrowed from another college because they were a newer college. But California, that's a huge strength. Now, there's still differences and you can add to it. You just need to, you know, keep the language that they give you that's mandated by law. And in your APs, there's a lot of flexibility. So, so those of course, you know, are the responsible, everything's a responsibility of the college and eventually the board, but you have an advantage because CCLC keeps everything legal if you keep up to date. So, I say that saying if that policy is based on a CCLC, and I'm sorry I didn't look at that one, but it probably says in it that it's by mutual agreement with the president and that the president, you evaluate the president on specific goals or items that the board has set so that the president knows throughout the year what he's going to be or she is going to be evaluated on and, and that it's an annual evaluation and you, you stick to the regulations. A lot of times, third parties are brought in to facilitate like this for the board and sometimes that just makes it easier because they have processes that they suggest. ACCT will add your goals. So, like next year, when you do this, you might add a section on how are we doing on our goals because you have board goals. And hopefully you'll set board internal governance goals and if ACCT does it again, they'll add a section that's on board goals and they'll ask you for each goal if you think that the board is meeting that goal. Okay?
And I wanted to ask one question because, you know, sometimes we do have changeovers and board members and different things. And on this specific one, depending on the makeup of the board, if there's an ad hoc committee that's working on evaluation tools and processes, are you aware if there's many institutions that just do that in the open session and the board vote on adopting what the instrument is and so it's copied?
I think, I think as far as the, the how and the process, yes. Nothing else about the actual evaluation is public, but I think when, when you take an action like that, the policy piece would be brought to the, to the board meeting and then voted on. But behind the scenes, there's mutual agreement between the president and the board. And the mutual agreement also extends to the goals. It's the president and the board together who agree on the president's goals. And usually those are based on strategic goals and then the board goals and there's a real continuity of everybody's goals throughout the institution. Okay?
Thank you.
Does that answer, is that, okay, great. Anything?
Yes.
The evaluation is valuable for, and particularly the comparison between the last one and this one so that we can see what we have done well and what we haven't. But it also presents some real challenges when you consider the timeline for the makeup of the board members and are they referring to a period, a certain period of time? And so, it's, it's hard to see the true application for the time now present.
Exactly. And that's why it's so important to have this conversation because you guys have undergone a lot of change. You've had change at the highest level in the administration of your institution and you've had change on your board. And so, some of the things that are in this evaluation aren't even applicable anymore, but there are three, not just, you know, recommendations to COD, there are three compliance recommendations that the board needs to respond to, to ACCJC. Maybe based on historical, but you still have to respond to them and that might be a part of the response. But you also have to demonstrate how you've moved beyond that and you're a different board. You can't just say, well, that's not us, that's somebody else. You have to say, that's not us, that was a previous board and here's what this board is doing to make sure that we don't do that. So, it's really important that, and this training tonight is part of it and this conversation that you're having with each other and the work that you're doing with CCLC, all of that is part of it. But the most important part are your actions and how you treat each other and how you treat your president and how the communication is and speaking with one voice in the public and not, you know, all the best practices that we'll get to in a little while. So, actions and then, you know, the discussion to make sure that you are all on the same page with your actions. Yes?
Yes. Something, I went to an all-day workshop that I am so excited that's going to help. I'm talking about having served eight years and then now going, I wish I went through that workshop and it was called AP and BP Governance.
Oh, good.
So, I think that, I just want to suggest that for the board because we at the College of the Desert are one of the leaders in AP and BP development. We had someone that presented it to the whole, for the CCLC and I would love to have a study session on that. I thought it was so wonderful, but also very informative in your role as a board of trustees with the AP and the BPs and how they're brought before the board and the shared governance tool along with it. We have a beautiful dashboard here at the desert district. So, I think that would be an action item that can help us with the accreditation that we are trained in that. So.
Yeah. And I'll tell you, I, I really, the last five years have been working a lot with policy with colleges throughout the nation, you know? And it's one of the biggest pitfalls in colleges. So, as I was preparing for this and reading everything, the evaluation reports, the recommendations, your self-evaluation, all the things I was reading, I would say to myself, well, they should have a policy on that. And I'd go to board docs and you had a policy on it and it was perfect, you know? So, I will commend you on your policies. Yes?
But I think knowing it, I think maybe what happened was we do have it, but that's why it would be great for a future agenda item, a study session on board policies, the way we were explained by Eileen, she gave it to all the trustees. It was just wonderful on APs and BPs and explained the processes that each of the California community colleges go through. It was amazing. Now I'm understanding why we rotate. I mean, it was wonderful.
Great. And that's, you're going to, when we get to one of the slides in my presentation, it'll be like you wrote it because that's exactly what we talk about as a best practice. So, but, but I think anything that you guys can do to improve your knowledge and your, you know, your knowledge base of what good trusteeship is, is phenomenal and should be documented in the, in your ACCJC report. And I want to say this because I think it from the bottom of my heart. We don't do anything just for the sake of accreditation. We do it because it's right and it's right for our institution. So, it's not, we say, well, we need to answer ACCJC's recommendations. That's true, we do. But more importantly, we need to do the right thing and we need to act in accordance with our policies and we need to act in accordance with best practices. So, yes, ACCJC is important, but more importantly is our roles and what we're doing. Okay? So, I'm going to just, I'm going to skip all of the individual, but we reviewed one of them and I'd like to ask you to take a little bit of time with this if you haven't already done it and review the individual responses and look at how trustees, how uniform the ratings were on some and how, how they weren't on others where some rated them like, like there were a few where a couple of people rated them a two or a three and then some a five. There are, those are areas where there's some discrepancy. And again, it might be based on past, but at least continue the conversation and continue working on improving in those areas where there were some, some trustees who felt that there was a problem. But I'd like us to move to the last pages where we had the open-ended questions if it's okay. And that's pages 45, 44. We'll start with page 44 and we're going to spend a little bit of time with this. And I don't wear a watch, so I'm going to have to look at my phone every once in a Just so we can stay on track. So, the open-ended questions. What are the board's greatest strengths? Can you just quickly read those five and see what you think about that? Do you agree that those are strengths of this board?
I would say that we are high-functioning.
That's awesome.
But very often like people who are high-functioning, they may be high-functioning because they have very low self-esteem. So, it doesn't, because we're high-functioning, it doesn't mean that we're healthy.
Anybody else? Really, the most important thing is that you're reading this and you're aware of what it says. So, we can move to the major accomplishments and what you guys talked about are, most of them are things that were, you did it and pretty much it's done or you might have to keep doing it. But the first one, trying to restore public trust for the college, I would say that's probably ongoing, right? So, you'll want, you'll want to think about that too as a goal. And we don't just set goals like saying, we're going to restore public trust. We then set some strategies that board members are going to use, like, like being out in the public and making sure you're not all at the same place because when you're all at the same place, your public thinks that's all you care about and what about me and what about my area? So, you want to have a coordinated effort for the trustees, okay, to restore if, if that's still an issue. And if it's a carryover even from past issues, it doesn't matter because it's still College of the Desert's issue and you are College of the Desert's board. Okay? So, you need to adopt that.
Even if you have the public trust, isn't it an ongoing initiative to continue to build and maintain that?
Right. Great. And we do have a slide about trust and I, when we get to that, maybe some of it'll kick in that you'll think, oh, maybe we could do a better job on that. And it's mainly aimed at trusting each other, but you can, you can take some of those principles and apply them to trust with the public and the public's trust with you. The rest of them, you know, are, you're doing them together with the college, I've kind of felt. So, if we could move to areas in which the board could improve. Are there any that you want to call out that you want to say, yeah, this is important for us to keep doing? Could she borrow one of these?
I had one I was just looking at because even the president probably has to deal with this too when people go off to conferences. They come back with all kinds of great ideas because, and if they're doing it and it's successful, that we must do it. And then we come back and we're excited and it may not be part of the board's goals or the president's goals for that time period. And so, just being conscious of the fact that we go see great things and so individually, we may get excited about something, but really what we need to do is bring the whole board along around that as a priority.
Right.
Before we put the onus on the president.
Exactly. Talk about it at a board meeting and as a whole, direct the president, but it's important that he's going to be evaluated on his goals that you've already set for him. And so, keep adding stuff every time you go. As presidents, we used to, when we'd get together for our meetings, one of our biggest pet peeves was every time trustees came back from conferences, we were inundated with more things they wanted us to do. And so, that is a really important, not, not that there shouldn't be some because that's why we go. If you hear some really good ideas that are making a difference for students and you want to bring them back, then, you know, we need to, we need to be open to that.
And that's why the president goes to, to keep an eye on the trustees.
Yes, exactly.
Board policy, board policy is very important, something the takeaway that I received, that is what we're talking about currently. So, going to the conference and bringing in APs and BPs and discussing that is essential. It's not a whim. It's what we do.
Yeah. And that's not asking the president to do more. You're already doing a good job. It's asking the board to understand. I think we were talking about, you go and you hear about some project another college is doing and you come back and say, hey, we wanted you to do this because this is really going good at Houston, you know? And it might not, you know, might not even work here, but it's also added work that, okay, you want me to do it, but when, you know? So, did you have something, trustee Yoden?
Yeah, I was just saying in house, pushing that may take the president off of the direction that we've given them.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I want to call attention to the top one, ensuring that the board acts as a cohesive unit. Okay? It says here that there's been improvement. That was one of the things that came out from the ACCJC report, but I want to emphasize, I read the team report too, not just the recommendations. And the team report gave some specifics of, of why they came to that recommendation and we'll talk a little bit more about it when we get to that.
But that also ties back to the other one that says communication with each other.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if you've got one or two trustees who are turning left.
Yes.
The other trustees are going straight.
Right. You have to be cohesive. Yes. And then, and tied to that is that once you have taken a formal action, you've agreed on something at a board meeting, everybody supports it. You have to because you are one unit. You're individual trustees during the conversation and you're representing how you feel and your viewpoint, but once you've taken a vote and a majority, if it's an item that a simple majority can pass, then everybody has to support it.
And just to add on, and respecting the minority voice, even if you've made a different decision, respecting and understanding their perspective.
Absolutely.
But out there, I think some.
And you know, if you follow Robert's rules, Robert's rules are written to respect the minority voice and the majority voice. So, it gives a place for the minor, it gives processes for the minority voices to be heard and then to. and then to, to make sure that they're, they're a part of the process. Okay? And I know that in the, in this evaluation, one of the things that was a way to improve was that you need to learn more about Robert's Rules, and we talked about including that part of tonight's. But it really is a whole study session, and you would probably wanna have your attorneys or legal counsel come in and talk to you about that. And I would say do that maybe with the Open Meetings Act, because that's a good combination to, to do together, and that would be a good. And for some of you, it'll be a review, but Open Meeting Act gets people and, gets boards and CEOs into trouble sometimes. So, it's really important that you understand that. Okay? So, let's move, if it's okay with everybody, let's move to the three to five issues you think the board should make its priorities. And again, you already did number one, and that you selected a president. And I wanna, I wanna call your attention, though, in, when I put together my themes in here, I also included that number one in the second priority, ensuring the new superintendent is, is successful. You have a huge role to play in that. And I don't know, you may have already thought about this, when we do a search, ACCT always recommends, especially if it's a first-time president, and I know Mr., Mr., do you go by Martinez Garcia or Garcia? Oh, is it okay? Okay, okay. And I'm just Debbie, okay? So, Val, do you, now I forget what I was saying. The success, yes. And have you already talked about a coach or a mentor for the, because we always recommend that for a first-time president, and I'm sure you've thought about it, and I, and Val probably already has somebody in mind, or you do. And it's just really important, because when we talk about best practices, I'm, we're really, I'm gonna emphasize this again, but nobody, there's nobody for the president to talk to. There's nobody the president should talk to, except the board, because you guys are a team and you're in this together. Nobody should hear anything, I mean, about the board. The president can't really talk to the administrative team, because the administrative team needs to respect the board and the board's decision and cannot see a division. And the same goes for the board. The board should never be speaking against the president. If there is something that needs to be addressed, it's a part of the evaluation process, which doesn't only have to happen once a year. You can put it on the agenda at a closed session if there's something that comes up that you need to talk to the president about. And, and so, there's, there's opportunity for you to have that, those conversations that you need to have with each other. But there's not opportunity for the president, especially, to have that with anyone else. A coach provides that opportunity. And friends who are, you know, at other districts who are never gonna have anything to do, it's not gonna come back to COD, because the la, the worst thing we can do to each other is bring each other down in the public or within the institution. The support is one of the primary roles that, and it's a mutual role. It's the president for the board and the board for the president. Okay? So, I highly recommend it. I wish, I would've had one my first year as a president, because there are things that come up that until you're a president, I mean, you never, you didn't know it. And so, yeah, it's nice to pick up the phone and call somebody and say, "Hey, how'd you deal with this?" Or, "Are you dealing with this?" And a, a coach or a mentor helps with that. Okay?
But when we're talking about ensuring the new president's successful, we, as a board, have to agree with the president of what the definition of that is.
Very good point.
You know, come up with a plan or set of benchmarks or what, whatever that tool is, here's, here's what we all agree success is.
Right. Good. Very good. It's nice that you're all committed to that.
And just for record, I'm going to the CCLC leadership training in July.
Wonderful. Awesome.
Dr. Chris Park already reached out to me, so.
Wonderful. That's, that's great. Perfect. Okay, so, anything else that you wanna talk about on this? We talked about the management, you know, the, the success of the president's important, and that will help ensure stability and continuity and success of the rest of the administrative team, which was mentioned a few times. I was really, really happy to see so many people talking about support for students. And it's also one of your goals that you already have, and it's a part of the president's goals, I know, and it's part of your strategic plan, because that's the reason we're all here. So, so it's good that so many people also put that as priorities for the upcoming year. And then fiscal stability, I see in here, there are things, when we, when we get to the last part where you're setting goals, you'll wanna refer back to this page. Okay? So, is there, we've taken a lot of time with this, is there anything anybody wants to say to wrap it up? And then we'll probably take a little bit of a break and then move to, what time is it?
5:45. So, breaks at 6:30?
We can move on. What is it? We can keep, what time do we take a break?
Well, we were intending to at 6:30, because.
6:30? Okay. Then we'll start, then, is there anything else anybody wants to say about this? Because then we'll move into the next part, which is ACCJC's recommend, or compliance requirements. And if I could have a PowerPoint back.
Question. These are ours to take home.
And they're, they're not confidential. We've just talked about them in public, but, and there's no names attached to anything, but you wouldn't wanna just hand it out, I don't think.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we're gonna move on to the next part, which is to review the ACCJC requirements and discuss what progress you've had to date. But I wanna start it off by talking about your fiduciary responsibilities. Have you all talked about this? Raise your hand if you've talked about fiduciary duties of the board. Because this is like the most important thing that is responsibility of all boards. And if you do these three things, you pretty much encompass everything. Okay? So, and I'm gonna give you a handout on it as soon as I finish this part, so that you're not reading that instead of listening to me. But it'll, it'll have everything that you'll see on the screen for the next few slides. Okay? So, these are your duties that trustees are responsible for. And if you look at the bottom of the screen, it says it's derived from Latin fidere, and that is to trust. So, you're trustees, and these are your duties, the fiduciary duties. Usually, when we think of fiduciary duties, we're thinking finance, that, and it's not about, it is in, to some extent, but it is all three of these. Duty of care, attendance informed, we'll talk about each of them more. Duty of loyalty, operating in the best interest of the college, and duty of obedience following the laws. Okay? So, duty of care. Duty of care is carried out by fulfilling these responsibilities. Attend board meetings and committee meetings if you have them. Prepare in advance for the meetings so that you know the information that's been given to you. Review any reports, financial reports, and information on a regular basis. Request information you need for decision-making from the president. And we talk about, we need to talk about that, because sometimes that gets to be a problem with boards. Everybody's inundating the president's office with individual requests for huge reports, and sometimes it's just not possible. One example is, you're in the middle of the financial audit, and the board requests every expenditure for the past seven years or something like that. And the president has, you have to have a way for the president to say, you know, if the whole board wants that, I can get it, but right now, we're in the middle of an audit, and it's, it's gonna take this amount of time. Okay? And then the direction needs, it's a relationship between the board and the chair, and coming back to the full board, because even the chair doesn't direct the president, but the chair can bring items back to the board and say, "This has been requested. We need to talk about it and see if we all really want it." Okay? Act in good faith in your decision-making. Consider the interests that come to you. Bring them forward if you need to, but when you make that decision as a trustee, you take off any other hat that you have as far as your roles in, in the rest of your life, and you put on the hat that says, "What's best for COD, our students, our community, and our employees." And that's the hat that you use when you make decisions. Delegate the day-to-day operations to your president and to the institution, the president's team at the institution. Duty of loyalty, carried out by the following responsibilities. Act in the interest of the institution and not in any personal interest. Adhere to your own conflict of interest policy. Disclose any conflicts, real and imagined, and then, I'm sure the policy says what you do. If the board says, "No, that's not a conflict," you can say, you know, you can talk about it and decide that it's not. Avoid the use of the organization for personal gain, and that usually means any immediate family member, not just your own personal gain. And then maintain confidentiality of information held by the college. And this is especially true of confidentiality of anything that's discussed at executive session. That's so important that the board respects that confidentiality, and I'm emphasizing it because it's one thing that came out in the evaluation and in the report from the team. And then duty of obedience is carried out by these responsibilities. Make decisions in accordance with the mission and interests of the college. Uphold the bylaws and policies. And that implies that you know them. Okay? And if you have a, an issue that is governed by one of your policies, you're not expected to know all 8,000 of them, but you can go back and look at it and make sure that you're acting in compliance with that policy. Ensure compliance with college reporting requirements. It doesn't say you do them. It just says that you ensure that it happens. Examine all legal and governing documents. And ensure compliance with related federal, state, and local legislation. And I would add accreditation, because most of our, you, if you lose accreditation, you, your units don't transfer, your students can't get financial aid, there's just so many, your colleges can't continue. Okay? So, your legal authority, because this is one of the, the things that you're responsible for, is respecting legal authority. So, you derive your authority from the Education Code of California, and most of your policies refer to that education code, because if there's a law governing it, CCLC puts it in there. California does an awesome job of that. And then Title V regulations are the chancellor's office. A lot of the education code is legalese, and so, there's sometimes even discrepancy on how it's, it's implemented. Well, the chancellor's office creates the Title V code, which then, the code of regulations, which explains to the colleges, "This is what that law means, and this is how it should be implemented." But if you just keep in mind, law trumps Title V. Okay? Because the law is in place by the legislators, and Title V is the California Community College's office, chancellor's office interpretation and implementation of law. You're also subject to other legal mandates, and two of them are here, the California Open Meeting Law, and that's the Brown Act in California, and then the Public Records Act, which is also in California, and I have links on here for, I will send this PowerPoint, you can have it, but I'll send a PDF of it, but the links will all still work. Okay? And then accrediting commission, and this is standard four. I didn't put all of them up here, but standard four is the one that the board is, that governs what the board can and can't do. So, that's the other legal mandate that you're responsible to. And all of this is in preparation for, and this is what ACCJC said about College of the Desert, and three compliance requirements means you're out of compliance with three standards. And these are the three compliance items that you're out of compliance with. And so, I looked, I thought, "Well, where did they get this? What happened?" I, I talked with your board chair and your president, and then I went and found your team report to find out, well, what, what did they really base this on? And so, here's a little bit of information from the team report. For the first one, requiring that governing boards act collectively, and that once you reach a decision, all board members act in support of that board's decision. Okay? The ISER, which is the Institutional Self-Evaluation Report, that notes, just, it says, "Well, these things have happened." And then the team comes out to evaluate the, the veracity of the document that was sent to them. And during the site visit, they interview people, they have meetings, they attend meetings, they, they, they do all kinds of research before they come. And what they found when they got here was that the board continues to act, to not act in consistently unified manner once the board reaches a decision. And you, if you're saying that was a previous board, then, then you might, you still have to demonstrate that you do it, but you can put that in the, in the narrative also. Okay? Furthermore, a common theme shared was that there were concerns of trustees undermining the collective board and putting the, the college at risk. So, this has to be answered by your actions and then by what you send back to ACCJC. And I know you all have read accreditation, self-evaluation reports, the ISERS. They're just, they're narratives, but behind the narrative is tons of actual evidence to support what is being said in the narrative. So, the other compliance requirement that they found was that the board adheres, they require that the board adhere to its own policy on regular evaluation, use the results to improve board performance, academic quality, and institutional effectiveness. And here's where trustee Oden, I, I really liked that they looked at two. They looked at 22 and they looked at 24 evaluations, and they said, "There are similarities between these two." And they skipped a year, and their policy says they're gonna do it every year. And so, they saw some issues with that. Okay? It wasn't just a one-time thing. It happened, it was in two evaluation cycles, and there was a year of evaluation that was skipped. And what they found was that they, that you, that the board, and it could be a previous board, but consistently veered from the collective business and, and moved instead towards perceived social, political, or personal matters of individual trustees. That the board needs to be receptive of all viewpoints, and you said that's improved a lot, which is great. You'll be able to document that. And that, again, once decisions are made, the board has to support the action, and you'll demonstrate that. And then the last thing here, and I have no idea what's, if it's happening here, but one problem that many boards have is, they're elected by districts, and then they think they just represent that district. And it's important to understand that when you, and I know I looked, and you are, you do represent districts, and so, it's important to understand, you do represent that district, and it's important to bring that perspective to the discussion, but it's also important to listen to the needs of the other districts, because in your role as a trustee, you represent the whole college and everybody who is a member of the communities that we serve. Okay? And then, they also found evidence that the board discussions related to the self-evaluation, and I put this in blue, because that's what meant to me that this tonight was so important, because they said, "It seemed that the last discussion was more just a checkbox. Well, we're just gonna do this, we can check it off and send it in, that we did it." Instead of that the results are used to improve the board. And so, that's why, when we talked, we felt like it was so important, not just to talk about the evaluation and about the ACCJC requirements, but to actually bring forward some ideas of possible goals that you might add for board improvement. Okay? That really shows that you're serious about, whether it was another board or not, that you're serious about this board being a highly effective board. Okay? And in the last one, they said, this one was about delegating full responsibility and authority to the CEO to implement and administer board policies without board interference. authority to the CEO to implement and administer board policies without board interference. They found that the board wasn't delegating authority to the CEO without interference, and that the board does not differentiate between their policy role and district operations. I am going to talk a little bit about that in best practices. And that board items are consistently pulled from the consent agenda or action delayed unnecessarily, which is what you kind of referred to earlier. Education's slow, and if the board slows it down even more, that makes it really hard. Sometimes you have to, and it's important, but by the time items come to the board, it's gone through a very long review process, and if they've, if the college has acted in accordance with policy, then most of the time, the board, especially on the consent items, just consents. During the focused site visit, after they reviewed all those documents, they found that the issues were confirmed, that there was disruption from the board to college operations through a lack of authentic delegation to the CEO. And again, this was a previous CEO, but that behavior is what can't happen, okay? And an understanding of the policy role versus administrative matters, and the board's ability to give collective direction to the president, not individual board members directing the president. So those are the three recommendations, and those are what the team read about, did the research on, and then came and verified. So now, for this part, I think in talking with Dr. Kinnaman, you guys had done some work already, and I think just we wanted to have a little bit of a discussion about that and that, talk about next steps.
Yes, and I was referring to the ad hoc committee that has been working on some of the recommendations and how we can move forward on addressing those and demonstrate. When did you tell me that we have our next?
March.
March, by March, that we can demonstrate that we've addressed each of these items. So this is part of the ad hoc committee tonight. What we're doing is part of the ad hoc committee's recommendation, and so we've had two trustees that have been working on that.
Okay. So the training is to help, is the ad hoc committee going to continue working on specifics that you're going to do to address some of these?
Yeah, we recently moved the ad hoc committee to a standing committee of continuous improvement for the board.
Wonderful.
But when we met, we, I looked at the ACCJC, and we said, okay, we've got to get this self-evaluation thing under our belts, so we know where we're at and where we stand. And once that came in, decided, okay, let's bring it forward to this session to start the process of educating us on what we need and where to go. We don't, we've not had a follow-up meeting to decide, okay, what's next steps. We were waiting for this session to go through. But just the two pieces really are showing intent to address this.
Yes, absolutely.
And if we continue the process of, okay, what's the next steps in building that, I think we'll easily get there.
That sounds wonderful. And the whole board is being kept informed, and you're doing, is there a, since it's a standing committee, is there a place on the agenda for a report from that standing committee?
We just approved the standing committee a week ago or so. Yeah, I guess a week ago, because we originally had the ad hoc committee, and so we've created the standing committee, but we haven't fleshed out what that looks like, the frequency of meeting, meeting times, et cetera.
Well, I would strongly suggest, and I'm suggesting this from working with other colleges, that once, because standing committees get created, and then sometimes you get so busy with everything that it kind of goes by the wayside. But if every month, there's an item on the regular board agenda asking for a report, it's okay to say, we haven't met this week, I mean, this month, but not to say that six months in a row. And so it kind of reminds you that, hey, we got to get a report on this, we better meet and talk about what. So I would really suggest that you put an item on the agenda for a standing committee report.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. I mean, you'll think about it. Everything I say is just suggestions, but it's based on watching other colleges and how they've corrected some issues, okay? Anything else? So then, are we okay to move on, or do you want to talk anymore about the?
Well, like you said, this wasn't checking off a box, but, you know, there's several things we've done, like hiring a permanent president.
Yeah.
And I think as we go through our self-evaluation, and really as we get familiar, really more familiar with those recommendations, I'm confident that with this board that we'll convalesce around it in a positive way.
Okay.
That's the right word.
Great. And I have the document where I pulled out from the self-evaluation for each of the items, and I'll give that to you so that, and I'll, it'll, what's in the report, you'll have, I mean, in my PowerPoint, you'll have, but I also have a document where I pulled it out just to think about what it meant, you know, to talk about tonight. So I'll give that to you also, okay?
I'd like to comment on the process of coming to a standing committee. It was discussed at the board, minority voices were listened to, there was a vote, and after the vote, the board moved forward together in support of the standing committee. So that is another illustration of how the board is moving collectively, even given a minority voice, the support it needed to be able to address their concerns, but yet still moving forward.
Wonderful. And those just need to be documented in the, because sometimes the college usually drafts the report, so when it's specific board behavior that you're talking about, the board really wants to make sure that, wait, we did this, we did this, we did this, and you want to make sure that those are included, okay?
Can I ask a question about that? So it is appropriate for the board to review the responses. Is there a?
Board to review what? The response?
In the ISER, it is, the board does have a role in what's written or review it, because I'm not sure that we participated in that process.
I don't see how you can answer, and, you know, I apologize in advance if this causes trouble with participatory governance, but I don't see how you can send a response to ACCJC about board behavior if the board doesn't at least review the response, only because the board could add, not to water it down, but to add evidence that might not be, that other people might not have thought about. The board should not use that as an opportunity to say, we didn't do that, or to, you know, anything like that. I think the board, as trustees, you have to be, you know, strong enough to say, yeah, that was a mistake, we did it, and yes, we have to respond to it, and we'll get better. But I do think that at least the opportunity to have some input on the evidence and before it's sent to ACCJC is just a positive for the college.
Thank you.
But Val, can you, is that, is that an issue here? What's the normal, does the board not sign off on, I've worked with so many states lately, I can't remember California's exact rules.
Yeah, the board would normally do that. It wasn't the ALO at the time, so I'm not sure where the process was taken.
Okay.
But typically, it would go before the board to review at least once, and then comment on, and then over to ACCJC.
Right. So, and that's done at a public board meeting, and so it's really just a support to improve the report, not to take things out. So I think that's very appropriate.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Okay. Anything else on? Can I have the PowerPoint back, please? Okay. So I think the second question that we had is what additional commitments can be made to address the compliance concerns? I think when we start talking about goal setting, we'll be able to, you'll keep that in mind, too, that the work to improve, to become a high-performing board, and to correct some of the issues, if there are still issues, could be in your board goals to improve, okay? And they could be tied to your accreditation recommended, or requirements, okay? So then I'm going to move on. I'm going to start this presentation of effective board governance. First, can we give this to everyone? This is just a recap of the fiduciary responsibilities, and... So, and I'm also going to ask Irene to give you, I asked Irene to make a copy of just standard four from ACCJC. And now, I know it's hard to just listen to somebody for a long time, so I'm going to have you do something, okay? We're going to, I want, I'm going to give you a paper here about teamwork skills, because a lot of what we've talked about up until now is teamwork and how well you're doing together as a board. And I would ask that you include the CEO in your team on this, and look at the three areas on here. There's a needs improvement, a meets expectation, or exceeds expectations, and it has a list of items under it that tells you that that's a sign of the board in that area. I'm giving it to you right now, I haven't given it to you yet. I want you to read this, and then circle the one you think where you are as a board as far as a team. Can we give this to him now? So just read it and read the items, and then say, where does, just start circling some
I'm a little confused. Is this our own self-evaluation, or is this about the team as a total?
It's about your team as a whole. Is there anything in there in any of the categories that you think is true of your No, 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 just circle them, because what we're going to say is, where'd you get the most? Are you in the needs improvement stage, or are you in the meets expectations, or are you exceeds, okay? It's just a discussion, so, yeah. This is for you to keep, I'm not collecting it. You all already had, when I walked in, you had a. No kidding. I know you got it.
In the month of May.
I'm going to make you work a little bit more during the PowerPoint, so it'll, you'll wake up. Just another minute or so on this, just need to see about where you kind of think most of your answers are. Okay, are you guys finished? Hang with me for 10 more minutes, and then we'll have a break, okay? So, okay. Let's begin the conversation, and we'll catch up, trustee Sanchez Fulton. So where do most of your responses fall in that you think are true of this board? Which category? Meets or?
Meets expectations.
Meets expectations? And can you say some of the ones that you think really stood out to you for meets expectations?
Sure. Communicates opinions and ideas in a clear and concise way to the other team members. Has a good way of solving team conflicts that ensures that peace and harmony are upheld. Shows great confidence when it comes to making decisions and sticking to them. Displays good leadership skills and has great ability to influence others. Expresses feelings and emotions in an open Expresses feelings and emotions in an open but non-confrontational way. Quick to notice and ease tensions that might be simmering within the group.
And I'm going to ask you a question just in comparison to the previous board because you were on it, right?
Right.
How do you feel was... Would you have ranked them the same on those or...
Probably not.
Okay. Okay. Good. And who wants to go next? Where did most of your answers fall?
I... I felt similar to Trustee Perez. I also checked a few exceeds.
Okay.
But on meets expectations, I hit encourages other team members to continue to improve themselves and do well at all times.
Wow. Good. And then what about exceeds? What do you have?
Respects the ideas and opinions that the other team members have to say.
Good. That's great.
And accepts defeat graciously and is always ready to congratulate the team members who do well.
Excellent. Those are great qualities for to have as a team. Trustee Sanchez Fulton, what... It was...
You want us to approach it?
We're... We were just reporting out where most of your answers fell and then some of the items that really jumped out to you about this board.
Didn't get to hear Trustee Perez's. I want to hear their... What did you say? I'm sorry. Yeah. I want to hear. No, I actually do.
No, really?
I put most of mine in meets expectations. And some of the ones that stood out to me were communicates opinions and ideas in a clear and concise way to the other team members. Has a good way of solving team conflicts and ensures that peace and harmony are upheld. Expresses feelings and emotions in an open but non-confrontational way. Shows great confidence when it comes to making decisions and sticking to them.
Thank you.
So mine, I'll start off with needs improvement. Doesn't know how to express ideas and feelings when with other members. That's one. Meets expectations, expresses feelings and emotions in an open but non-confrontational. Quick to notice and ease tensions that might simmering within the group. Encourages other team members to continue to improve themselves and to do well all the time. And then the highlighted exceeds, most of my responded was exceeds expectations with a happy face as a teacher. Listens carefully to what others are saying without interrupting them. And shows great skill and ability to be resourceful in a team and uses available resources to achieve the highest possible results.
Wonderful. Thank you. Trustee Oden?
As a board member who's kind of gone through the transition, I think more meets expectations. I'm seeing improvement where the concentration lies.
Okay. Did anything really jump out at you that represents that especially to reinforce what they've said or to... Is it something different?
Encourages other team members to continue to improve themselves and to do well at all times. And expresses feelings and emotions in an open but non-confrontational way.
Wonderful. So it seems like you all feel that you encourage each other and that you listen to each other, which is phenomenal. Dr. Kenan, would you...
I've circled almost all the same ones that's been mentioned. And then if you go down to exceeds expectations, questions what the team is doing to try to ensure that everyone is benefiting. Respects the ideas and opinions that the other team members have to say. Participates actively in all the team's activities and always displays a winning mentality. Accepts defeat graciously and is always ready to congratulate the team members who did well.
That's awesome. Thank you. So now, team member Val?
You know, having sat as a CIO and CSSO here, I've had the privilege of sitting over there on the dais and watching the board for the last two years. And speaking specifically to this board, I think I'm going to highlight exceeds expectations. Now, I'm sitting as a CEO specifically. Shows great skill and ability to be resourceful in a team and uses available resources to achieve the highest possible results. I see a lot of, how would you say, great skill in this board and they bring it to the table. They're problem solvers when asked for questions and how would we... Could we go about solving something? They offer us great solutions. And so I find that to be very comforting in this role. That's something I didn't see when I was over there.
Okay. Wonderful. Good. Effort to keep that going. So that's awesome. So I think we're close enough to the 6:30 mark that we can break. I don't want to start a new topic if...
I think so. So at this time, we will recess and I'll ask everybody to join me at 6:30. And then I anticipate we'll be back around 7 o'clock, but at this time, we will stand recess.
...
We are reconvening the Board of Trustees special meeting at 7:06 PM.
Power Point up. So, we're ready to move into the discussion of effective board governance and best practices for high-performing boards. Okay, and we're ready. So, effective board governance. Basically, it fulfills these four things. Fiduciary duties, which you already talked about and can't emphasize enough. Understand your roles and responsibilities and adhere to them. Implement best practices of effective boards, which we're going to talk about. And then establish and respect communication protocols. So, we're going to go through all of these. We already went through fiduciary duties. I do have a handout that I want to give you to, and I'll actually give it to Irene after the meeting, but it breaks down what I've collected from different places on the web into different, what each of the duties means, okay? So, I'm going to move into board roles and responsibilities. This is your policy, and I think it was the most current of your policies, but if not, you'll know. And if you'll notice, just glancing at the bullet points here, just kind of try to remember them a little bit because you'll see that most of those are best practices of high-performing boards. So, I'm going to move on. The board roles and responsibilities, the biggest thing that boards have a problem with when there is an issue is differentiating between their role and the role of the CEO and the administration. So, the board stays at the high-level leadership, policy, ensuring planning. You'll notice the words here don't imply actions on the board in most cases. The action happens at the college when they implement the board's policies. So, ensure planning, you have oversight and monitoring, delegate, support, protect, assure the fiscal health, and advocate. And on the president and the administration side, they execute policies, they ensure and implement planning. They also lead and manage, they also lead, and then in addition to that, they manage, which the board doesn't because you have one employee, and that's the CEO. And then, they are responsible for the day-to-day operations of the college. These are a list of board roles and responsibilities. I'm going to quickly go through it because a lot of them match what's already in your policy, but building a competent board, I didn't see in there, and that's the training that we already talked about and some of the ideas that you have for bringing the policy presentation to the board and all the different things that we talked about. Governing as a whole body, not an individual, set of tone of respect and civility. And as a previous CEO, I cannot emphasize enough how much the board impacts the behavior and the morale and the climate on the college campus. And I don't, I don't think you realize how important you are in that. And Val, do you agree with that?
A hundred thousand percent.
Okay. Well, I'm glad. You're not supposed to ask a question you don't know the answer to, but I kind of thought you'd agree. But anyway, so, making the board a priority, doing your homework, being ready for your meetings, supporting and advocate for the college everywhere you can, but specifically, the advocacy efforts on behalf of college education and community colleges specifically at the state and federal and even local level is a big role of community college trustees. And there are organizations that help with that. ACCT is one, but there are several that help with advocacy, especially at the national level. Discourage partisan politics. It's really important, and this is hurting some boards across our country, to let partisan politics interfere with the work of the board. It really isn't, your work is on behalf of the college as a group and keeping politics out of it. Focus on listening and learning from the external community. Your role is, you are elected by the community, and you represent the community, and you bring information that other people don't have, and you have contacts that other people don't have, but you bring that to the table where you all discuss it and then to the president, who you give the responsibility to act on it. Focus on, I mean, exercise fiduciary responsibility, we talked about. Set the college's strategic direction. Focus on policy. Hire and evaluate the CEO. Powerfully delegate, so everybody knows, and we're going to talk about a few ways you can do that. Provide the contract, hold the CEO accountable through monitoring, publicly support the CEO. Set realistic goals in collaboration with the CEO and monitor performance, and then set policy standards through the appropriate use of college funds. The president has a responsibility in this relationship, and the role of the president, some of them you'll see are the same as the role of the board, except towards the board instead of the board towards the president. So, respect the board and its role. Engage the board in policy-level discussions. Adhere to board policy. Listen. Never ask the board to make a decision without enough information. Make recommendations when you bring a recommendation to the board that include a thorough analysis and options for presenting to the board, the why of why the college is making that recommendation so that the board can support it. Provide all board members with the same information at the same time. So, when you respond even to a request that seems meaningless, I mean, just seems real quick, I'm responding, send it to everybody. And the best way to do it for you, and you probably already do this, some of this, but for you and for anybody who sends anything to the board on your behalf, is to blind copy all of the trustees so that they're not replying to each other and then breaking the Brown Act, okay? Treat all the trustees equally, respect their time, publicly support the board, facilitate trustee involvement in the community and the college. So, decide, make sure the trustees know what's happening on campus so they can attend if they want to, and trustees, make sure you let the president know so that the president can make sure that you're introduced, if that's appropriate, and can be there to welcome you, if that's appropriate. But there, the trustees should always let the president know if they're going to be on campus, and the president, make sure that the trustees know about the events and the activities that they specifically should be represented at. And there's a lot, so that again requires some coordination on the board so that everybody doesn't feel like they have to be at everything, and yet, the board is represented. Stay out of, the president should stay out of board politics, and that even includes when they're electing and they're talking about who's going to be the officers because it's the job of the CEO to work with whoever's elected as the officers. And then set realistic goals in collaboration with the board. Keep the board informed of financial conditions and manage and administer all aspects of the operations of the college. Whoa, what did I just do? So, we talked a lot about policy, and this is just going to touch probably on trustee Sanchez's phone, just going to touch on what you're talking about, but I want to talk for just a couple of slides about policy because that's such an important role of the board. Major principles of policy governance are that board decisions are predominantly policy. It's at the policy level. You look at everything through the policy lens, and that's the what. What you want, not the how. The how you leave to the president and the administration. They're very qualified, and you hired them to do that job, and so, you let them do that job. Policies are broad statements that set the direction and standards for the cause to operation, so it's way at the high level of policy. It doesn't get into the how that's going to be implemented at the operations. And then, boards define and delegate. So, tell the strategic direction upfront and the parameters, and then get out of the way and let the people who are, you're paying to do that job, do that job. Policy categories, this is what we want to spend a little bit of time on because your board goals don't really, I mean, your board policies don't really separate, and this is one area, I'm going to kind of make a suggestion, which you can take or leave, but you have internal governance policies. And in California, that's generally chapter two, although there may be a few others woven in, but those are the ones that the board's responsible for, and you really don't want anybody else, even the president, telling you how to do those. Like, for example, board ethics, you know, board elections, board anything. If it's not governed by law, then the board can decide how they want to do the things in chapter two of the board policies. Your policy on how you do policies and APs doesn't differentiate between the two, and it actually gives the president the power to do the, and it probably would never happen, but in writing, you have it, that the president can write the APs for all policies. So, the president could actually write the APs for how the board's going to do some of the things in chapter two that are the board's responsibility. What we advise is, and working with colleges, what I've done, is help them just write a different path in that policy on policies. You don't need a separate policy. You can write a different board, and you already have in your AP, which is awesome, and I'd like to recommend that you let us use as a sample at our policy, we're creating a policy, you know, a whole bunch of policies that people can access if they're looking for good examples. But your policy, it does a great job of saying, okay, here's option one, and here's option two. If they're legally mandated and there's substantive change, and they're legally mandated, there's not substantive change. And then there's an option three, which is not legally mandated, but we need to make a change because of either circumstances or whatever. And so, there are different processes. One and two, because they're legally mandated, have an expedited process in your policy. And then three, your option three, has the full participatory governance, which, as trustee Oden pointed out earlier, is a long, drawn-out process, and every step usually requires two reads, and then the board requires two reads, and anyway. But you don't differentiate between internal and college. And for the college policies, it's as important for the board to stay out of the beginning of that. You want the expertise of the people in the, like, whatever chapter, I forget, six, five, six, seven is HR. You want the HR people doing those, and then they bring you the recommendations through the shared governance process or participatory governance process through the president, and the president brings a recommendation to the board if something needs to be changed. But the internal governance, you really might want to talk about adding something to your policy that, did you want to say something? Okay. Yeah.
After the final, the rotation that we're doing, which is phenomenal, thank you Irene, and having that board docs, just a plug that other community colleges are looking at our rotation on how we do our BPs. And so, but I wanted to, if you could elaborate a little more, that's what I'm kind of in particular interested, is the internal board governance, chapter two, where the board, it's about the board and the board should be presenting it, not the president nor, I mean, like, could you collaborate a little more?
Well, and, and the president should be involved. The president might be able to bring recommendations. You might say, hey, can you see what five other community colleges in California are doing with this, or however you want to do it. So it's not like the president's not involved, but just for chapter two, it shouldn't have to go through participatory governance. It shouldn't have to, I mean, they might get it as an information item in case they have any suggestions, but they're not going to tell the board what board ethics should be, or what the board code of conduct could be, should be, or, you know, some of the things that the board decides for itself. And many of those are legislated. California legislates a lot, so many of them, you don't have a lot of say over, but you can add and you can state things differently. And in your AP, you have a lot of flexibility about the how, how you're going to do it. And you, I would not think that you would want to delegate that to someone. And so that will take a little bit of work to revise the policy on policies and to set up the process that you would use. And it could be a subcommittee that, that, that meets and takes the chap, the number of policies that are in chapter two, divides it by three or whatever, and eval, like, revise, looks at and brings to the board to review. Most of your policies, I think, are every six years, but your board policies in chapter two, there's fewer of them, so you might be able to do that in a three-year cycle. And then it would be updated every three years because you do a third, a third, and a third. But if it's too many, do it over six years. And you would periodically be updating because, and I'm going to really emphasize this, the most important thing is what's up there right now. It's, I mean, what's the policies say is important, but more important is that you all understand them, especially chapter two, and that you all act in a manner consistent with them. And you can't do that if you don't know what they say. And so if you're reviewing board policies on a consistent basis, even if all you're doing is reading them and saying, yeah, all of this sounds good, it's perfect, it's what we do, we don't need to change anything, you've reviewed them and it's fresh in your mind. Okay? And so I would say that that might be one change you guys might want to consider making. And then a second thing is if you look at the second paragraph there, I recommend this to every board ever since I heard about it. And I really think it's a good idea to consider documenting in policies that you as trustees will annually publicly reaffirm your commitment to your role. And ACCT has a public affirmation that you could use as a starting point, that it's with the deepest sense of responsibility and conviction that I assume my role as a trustee of College of the Desert and I solemnly affirm that I will. And then you, you read this out loud, you all sign it, you make a show of, at your annual meeting, publicly saying, I'm going to do what I'm supposed to do. And you can, you can hold me accountable to that because I'm giving you my word that I'm going to do it. So it's just, it only takes, you know, five or 10 minutes at a board meeting, at the annual meeting, and you just, I have a copy of your annual meeting and how, your policy on that. You would just add a statement and then, and then revise this however way you want and publicly make that affirmation each year. And the good thing is too, that if you do have trustees that come in and mid-cycle, they could, as a part of their trustee orientation and onboarding, at the very first meeting after they assume the role, they could do the affirmation too. That could be added to that board policy so that it becomes an expectation and everybody understands, you know, really what your roles are. Okay? So that's a second thing that I would recommend. And I did not see it, it might be in another policy, but I, I didn't see it. So that's a recommendation.
Just for clarification, APs that are in chapter two do run through the participatory governance process in that they go to our shared governance or participatory governance committee for a first read, second read for input only. Typically they don't make any changes or have never brought forward any changes. Then from there, I, I bring them forward to the board for a first read and second reading. At that, at the point of the first read, the board members are able to make changes and, and comment accordingly. It's institutional practice, it's been around the COD for a long time. So I would, I would caution, jumping over to, to change that process without first consulting the participatory governance groups, just so that everyone know there would be a change and the reason why there would be a change.
And I understand that, but even what you just said isn't in the policy, that they, they don't have the authority to make changes. Because right now, it looks like the process gives everybody else the authority to tell the board what they need to do for board internal governance. And, and I don't think the faculty, I mean, I know they won't want that on the academic policies that they have first priority over and they, you know, consult collegially and everything that, that 10 plus one allows them to do. And so I think a conversation about it would make them realize, hey, this is really an oversight on our part. But I totally respect what you're saying and I understand what you're saying. It should start with a conversation if there's a change and if the board wants to make that change. The best time for a board to make a change is when everything's going well, when you're collegial. It's very difficult when you realize there's a problem to make a change. And so right now, it could be a future problem if it's not corrected. I lost my PowerPoint. So we'll move on from here, but Val, I don't want to lose sight of what you just said because you really don't want to disrupt participatory governance unnecessarily. You want to have the conversations and the respect for all the constituency groups and by talking about it and having them be a, a part of the conversation. Okay? So, best practices of highly performing boards, and some you'll hear are repetitious to what we already talked about, but board governance, best practices, the board stays focused on the big picture, the what. Delegates clearly and powerfully. Resist the temptation to prescribe the, the how. And then tells the CEO the what through policy, not just directing the CEO. And then monitors for accountability. So high-performing boards, these are the four bullets for, buckets for high-performing boards. They understand governance. They embrace the full scope and responsibility of their role as staying at the policy level. They know and respect the difference between the board's role and the administration's role, and they are ambassadors for their college. They think strategically, understand the mission, vision, values, and culture. They focus on what matters most for long-term sustainability, and they ask insightful questions and listen with an open mind. And I think, Val, that's really important about what you just said. The culture of each college matters. And anything that's going to, you don't continue to do something that, that you don't think is right because, to keep status quo, but you respect the culture and you work through that culture with the constituency groups. So I'm glad you brought that up. And then lead by example. Conduct yourselves impeccable, with impeccable integrity. Think independently, but act collectively. Okay? And we've said that several ways, but I love that way. Think independently and act collectively. Champion access and success for all students. And develop strong board-CEO relationship by personifying ethical behavior again, establishing and hearing, adhering to communication protocols. Support each other and the CEO and participate in the annual evaluations, which you're, you're doing. So here's just a picture of governance consultation and administration. We've talked about governance and what it is, we've talked about administration and what it is, is, but there's a, an intersecting circle in the middle, if I go back to my geometry days, where you both have a role. The CEO and the board both have a role, or the, the CEO and the college and the board. So one of those is policy development. For all the college policies, the board doesn't do that by themselves. The college doesn't do that by themselves. You work together to, to, to recommend revisions and, and changes that have to be made either legally or because it's not working. And then board has a role in, in its approval. Strategic planning, same thing. The board doesn't sit around and strategically plan for the future of the college. That involves far more than that. That involves community input, constituency group participation, all constituency groups, and board participation in addition to the external scan and the internal scan and the, you know, the economic forecast and jobs of the future and everything that we take into consideration when we do strategic planning. So it's not done by the board alone. And same with advocacy, and we already talked about that. The board's responsible, the president's responsible, and everyone who works at the college is responsible for advocating for College of the Desert. So here's just an example of how the two roles interface, just using budget. So the board of trustees, the president is responsible for developing the annual budget, establishing income and, and param, expense, well, after the board approves it. So the board approves the annual budget. The president brings it to the board based on recommendations and usually it starts with the board approving budget assumptions and then the board is, the budget is built and then the board approves it. And then the president has to ensure that it's implemented within the guidelines that the board has given. Then the board improve, approves internal control policies, but they don't do that independently of the president. The president works with the board to develop the financial policies and internal controls. And of course, when I say president, I mean that, I think I am talking about the whole team. The CFO and whatever you call your, your CBO, whatever the initials are for your chief financial officer. And then the board actually has the responsibility of hiring the financial auditor, but the president brings forth the recommendation of the audit firm. And then the president and the college are responsible for responding to any audit findings. So you can see that it's a team. You work together on almost everything. So I will move to the next one. So we're going to play a little tru, have you guys played two truths and a lie? Have you ever played that? Okay. We're going to do that right now with governance and operations. So I'm going to show you three statements and then I'm going to ask you, is it a truth? Is it a truth or is it a lie? Okay? And each slide has two truths and a lie on it. Ready? So here's the first one. The board adopts and follows policies that define structure and role of the board and its officers and establish standards for trustee and board behavior. Is that true? Or, how many people say true? True? Good. Second one. Board is responsible for leading and administering the college. True? Everybody shaking their head no? Good job. And then number three. The board is responsible for adopting policies that define and require sound investment practices, sound cash flow, et cetera. True? True. Okay, good. That was easy, right? Let's try this one. Number two. The board is responsible for establishing and enforcing administrative procedures that implement board policy and ensure the legal, ethical, and prudent management of college resources. True? Raise your hand. Nope? Everybody agrees that's false? How about this one? The board is responsible for identifying and discussing broad policy-level values inherent in issues before the board. True? Raise your hand if it's true. Yes? Good. The board ensures that college operations and budgets are aligned with plans. What do you think? Is it true? Raise your hand if it's true. I'm kind of tricking you on this one, I didn't mean to, but it's true, definitely, but the president also has a responsibility, right? Yeah, right. Exactly. It's both. Yeah. And I didn't, I didn't say that was an option and you guys did it anyway. So, good. All right? Next one. The president sets the strategic direction. Raise your hand if that's true. Okay, the clue in that is strategic. The president does a lot of direction setting, but when you're talking about high-level strategic direction, that's the board. Okay? And then, so that's such, that's a false statement. Okay? The second one. The president leads and administers the delivery of high-quality educational programs and services, including planning, development, program review, and staffing. True? Good. And then number three. The president creates a positive climate for effective leadership through supporting institutional leaders, modeling integrity and vision, and ethical behavior. Excellent. That one is definitely both. I'm proud of you guys. Good. Because it's definitely not either. It's both. Okay? And then the last one. The board adopts policies that define and delegate clear, appropriate authority and responsibility for educational programs and services. True. Good. Two, the board adopts the, develops the annual budget, establishes income and expense parameters, and determines the specific expenditure within approved budget lines. False. Okay, go ahead. Correct. But this goes into the detail of operations. So this is false. Good. And then the third one, the board, the board hires the financial auditor. You actually do. You actually hire. In Californians, yeah, they recommend and you hire. Good. You guys did really good on that. Good, give yourselves a hand, you did great. So one of the things that we've talked about is effective communication and, and that's a best practices of high-performing boards. You do have some direction in your, I think it's in your standards of practice policy, but you might want to, again, look at that to see if there's anything that you want to add once you start thinking about giving clear direction for communication. And I say this with, I've worked with boards, usually when we get brought in for longer periods than just a, a one-day retreat, we, we are hired as a, you know, to work monthly with the board, there's usually issues. And one of the issues is around communication usually. Communication with each other, but more often communicate, external communication and, and board communication with college constituents. So here's some of the best practices, okay? Effective boards need to discuss protocols for communication with the president, for communication with each other, for avoiding non-posted quorums or serial meetings, which are forbidden by the Brown Act.
Can you explain the non-posted quorum?
You know, some states call, call it that. If you, if you, there are four, if there are three of you in a place.
Three or more in a place.
Then that's a quorum.
Unless it's a social event, we do not discuss business.
Right. But even, even those, there's usually some kind of notice sent. It's not an official posting and you don't have to. And so you're exactly right. If it's a social event or you're all going to a college event or anything like that, as long as you're not discussing.
Graduation next week, there'll be more than three of us there.
Yeah. Yeah. When there are more than three, it's a quorum, if you're talking about college business. And the hard thing on this one is you need to avoid the appearance of breaking the Brown Act. And it, there's an appearance of it. If three of you are somewhere and you're talking, there's an appearance that you're talking about the college. And you just, it's just better to avoid that.
So this means we need a special Casuelas Cafe calendar, so we're not all there at the same time.
Good point. Okay. So, and- Okay, so, and the use of college email, you know everything's subject to the public records request, you're careful about what you put in writing, you've had some training on that probably, but it gets people into trouble, it gets boards into trouble, it gets administrators into trouble, it gets coaches fired in the NFL, I mean, you know, using email that can be made public, and unfortunately, you work for a public institu-, well, not unfortunately, but you work for a public institution, and everything you do on college email is subject to public records request, with a few exceptions if it's an attorney-client privilege and a few other things like that. But if you haven't yet had a training on that, and if the administration hasn't had a training on that, I highly recommend it that an attorney speak to you about that, because we brought, gosh, now my mind's blank, but one of the biggest firms in California in to do it, and my team had never heard, I mean, just, they were shocked at what they told us and how they advised us to use college email. And most of the time, they said, "If it's controversial, get up out of your office and walk down the hallway and talk to them," you know? So, board members can't do that, but you just have to be careful what you put in email because it's discoverable. Communication with college staff, handling employee complaints brought to the individual trustees, meeting with employee union reps, handling community member concerns, and speaking with the press, I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail, but best, these are the best practices, okay? College email is used by all trustees and the president when communicating about college business. I believe it, I believe it was California, but I know that when it was contested because a person did it on their private phone, that did not fly, because it was still college business and it was communication between trustees and, trustees and/or the president. So even using your private phone or your private email isn't necessarily a protection Yeah. Well, I don't wanna say for sure, I think an attorney should advise you on that, because it varies from state to state, but if it goes to the courts, they're usually gonna decide, they can't get into any information on your phone that's not about the college, and they can't get into it, it usually goes, there's a process that's followed to, you know, get the ones that deal with the college, but I would really advise having an attorney advise you on that, okay, especially since you're using your personal phones for college business. Okay? So, this one's really important. Board communication communicates all requests through the president. So if you get requests for anything, you communicate that through the president, you don't answer the request, you say, and that's in the next one, this is, for anything, it goes through the president, the board doesn't have the power to say, to make commitments on behalf of the college. And the president usually needs to come to the board for the board's full approval, okay? And then, the third bullet ties with that. Trustee communication with individual employees really needs to begin with the trustee saying, "Any information you share with me will be directed to the president," because what that does is, it shows the employee, "I know my role, and my role is not to solve internal issues at the college, we've delegated that to the president, and so, you can talk to me," because you don't wanna say, "No, you can't talk to me," you can tell somebody, "You can talk to me, but you need to know that whatever you tell me, I need to talk to the president about, because we've delegated the authority to deal with issues at the college to the president." And so, it lets them know right up front, and then they can decide whether they still wanna talk to you or not, and then you, if they do, then you need to communicate that to the president, and the president needs to respond to you and say, "I've handled that issue," or "I've sent it to the appropriate person at the college and they're handling it." Okay? So there's good communication that flows, and it doesn't interfere with the internal operations of the college. Okay? Any questions about that? And then, "Trustees respect the boundaries established by their governance and policy role and limit direct communication with constituency groups." And I don't know what your policies or practices are, not policies, but what your practices are. Do you have, do you meet directly with employee groups or with union groups, or have you delegated that?
I believe that's all delegated.
That's delegated? Because I'll tell ya, I worked with one college in California, and they told me, they meet with the union, and they're gonna keep meeting with them, each individual trustee meets with the union, and I, and they said, "But we're not, they're not lobbying us," and we said, "Oh yeah, they are." Whether they say that or not, they are. So it is really important that you set your procedures and that you agree, and the best practice is that you limit communication with constituency groups at the college, because you have delegated that to the president, and that interferes with his ability to do the job.
One item you missed on here is communication with the press.
Say that, oh, communication, yeah, we didn't, I don't think I have it on the next page either. So, the communication with the press, that's, with any media, is really important that you have in your policy, and I don't, I don't remember if I saw it, you guys might remember, but most, there are best practices in that, that it goes, you designate, and sometimes it's the PIO at the college, sometimes it's the board chair, or the board chair and the president together, but it's not each individual trustee responding to requests for information or opinions with the press. And I'll say again, even when you say, "I'm not speaking as a trustee, this is just my individual opinion," that's, that's not what's gonna be printed in the press probably, and it's also not gonna be what everybody believes who reads it.
And nothing is ever off the record. I know from a long time ago, personal experience.
That's right. I know, my nephew's an attorney, and I said, "What, if I say something off the record," and he goes, "It might be off the record to you, but it's not off the record to the attorney," you know? So, communication protocols, these are just effective communication, what you expect from each other, and I was pretty excited, because I put, if you notice, on the next three slides, no surprises is in red and bold and big on all of them, and you actually have that in your policy, so, good job on that, too. So, trustees expect from each other patience, collegiality, respect, and those are some of the words that you've used tonight to describe your interactions with each other, grace, the benefit of the doubt, okay? Assume the best, and then ask questions, give them a chance to explain, just don't attack. And then, personal and professional support, willingness to build a strong team, which it sure sounds like you are with the, with the trainings that you're willing to go through to become even better trustees, understanding your governance policies, shared understanding of board conduct and ethics, and your ethics policy, I know you just revised it, yes? Yes?
Standing committees, do you recommend a standing committee? Because sometimes a standing committee could be three members, or an ad hoc committee. What's, I just, I'm, I'm...
It really depends on what needs to be done at your institution, to tell you the truth, your policies are really good, and so it might not need a standing committee that meets every month, yeah.
Say an ad hoc.
Yeah, but it could be even a committee that'll meet, it depends how you decide you're gonna divide up your policies, it might be you meet three times a year, and, you know, however, but there's not a, not one way to do that, it's done differently at a lot of districts, and, and that's a, that's one of the things that, as an individual trustee, you would bring that recommendation to the board, the board would discuss it, and then the board would say, take a vote, and if the board votes not to, then the board has to come up with an alternative way, if you're gonna change the policy. Now, see, the first step is, right now, your policy says that you have a way for all the policies to be revised, that has to be changed before you have a subcommittee of the board on policies.
I thought that the chairman could start an ad hoc committee on, let's say, it wouldn't be called board govern-, it would just be maybe learning, you know, board governance and AP, knowing that.
If, the reason, the board, you're right, that the chair can do that, but not when it's in opposition to another policy. And right now, you have a policy on, on the creation and revision of policies, so you would be creating a subcommittee to, that would take over the work that's already given to participatory governance. See? So, step one would be have that conversation, and then make that decision, and if then you separate the internal, chapter two, the internal governance policies, then the next step would be to make the recommendation that you, that you have a subcommittee. And I think that's what Val was cautioning against, don't get the cart before the horse, because it upsets people.
So to repeat a little different words that I'm hearing, can create an ad hoc committee to look at the current process for policy, and either ratify and say, "Hey, this is great," or make a recommendation to board to change that process policy, to adopt to XYZ 1, 2, 3, whatever that subcommittee recommends back to the board.
I would think that might work, but I would say if you do that, and I don't know how your committees are set up, but you would include the leadership of the constituency groups in that, yeah, to have that discussion.
So currently...
Not independently of them.
So currently, chapter two is being looked at of the committee, but there's no board representative, so let me, let me, there's no one over stairs, so you have faculty and standing committees doing, giving board policies, making board policy?
Well, recommending.
Recommending.
Recommending board policy, the board always has the final say on any policy in California, so, you know, even the college policies, you could say, "No, take this back and re..."
Am I wrong, Val? So currently, is that what's going on?
The committee that would review those are CPC, and CPC typically takes CLC's language, CCLC's language, and we incorporate it. The committee CPC will review them for consistency in past institutional practice and different things that have gone on in the institution over the years, and then they push that up to the board, who has a first read, and at the first read, the board has the opportunity to recommend changes and/or additions at that time, and then it goes first read, which is the approval.
But I wanna give you an example. Say the board talks about it and decides, "You know what, we really wanna add a public affirmation to our policy on our annual meetings." The board would have to ask that committee if it's okay to do that?
No, that, that would be the role of the first, in the first reading, so when they came back for the second reading, they can make that recommendation, and they would just delay the approval to the next meeting.
But you see how that...
But does the recommendation become fact or recommendation back to the committee?
No, the recommendation stays within the board.
In the policy, though.
The current policy is the CPC does it first.
Yeah.
CPC takes the language from CCLC.
And this is not CCLC language, this is just something, and I'm just using an example, you might not even wanna do it, but if the board did wanna do it, it really doesn't make sense that the board would have to ask CPC if it's okay, and then they would come back with a recommendation to the board that, yes, it's okay. And I, and I hate that I opened this can of worms, I'm really, really sorry that I did, but I just think maybe you wanna talk about it, and you wanna, and I'm really begging the board here, because I'll be the one who's in trouble, no, but, begging the board, participatory governance is so important, we're the only state in the union where it's mandated by law, you don't wanna do anything that demonstrates disrespect for participatory governance. So if this is something that you want to look at, then I would have Val as a partner working with you and with the constituency group leaders to talk about the why and the reasons for this, and, and come to an understanding with each other about why this should happen. Okay? So, I apologize, Val, I didn't mean to make it harder for you, but...
Just for clarification, it would not go back to CPC after the board had her first recommendation, read her first recommendation, and then it came back for a second reading, and the second reading if the board decided to make changes to that AP, they can make the AP, and then at the chair's request, bring it back to the next meeting for actual approval, so it would not go back to the constituents.
But I don't think it says that in the AP, I think that's the, might be that everybody's understanding, but I don't think it's in writing, and so that's why it probably needs to be clarified.
Ms. Treff, I may, can we take this conversation offline for another?
I think, well, we can go forward with the training.
What's that?
I think we can go forward with the...
You have an understanding, and you're gonna, you're gonna figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So the last is, I mean, this is the trustees, the end of trustees expecting from each other, united front and support even on split vote, and no surprises, okay? And then, effective communication, what the board expects from the president, day-to-day leadership, timely communication, good and bad news, information provided at the same time to all trustees, reports, this says monthly, but you can do it however often you decide, building a strong team and then delegating and empowering the people that work for you, the president doesn't do everything that gets done at the institution, he delegates that further with, and you have policies that allow him to delegate. Differentiate between individual trustee requests and the board requests, and the board should have protocols for how you differentiate, and then again, no surprises. And then, effective communication, what the president expects from the board, personal and professional support, clear expectations, information from both internal and external sources, understanding of role and policy, sticking to the priorities, and support innovation and risk-taking, allowing flexibility, a united front, and support on difficult decisions if the board directs the president to do something, and then the president does it, and then everybody's mad at the president, the board takes responsibility for directing the president to do that. Insight and appreciation of the individual trustee's opinions, patience, and no surprises. Anything else that you guys would think of that hasn't been mentioned here, for any of the ways of communication? Or does that pretty much cover it? Okay, so, here's a case study, and you're gonna talk about this, we'll do, you two will talk about it, you two will talk about it, and you two will talk about it, and then you'll tell the group, okay? So, you're a new, a new president was hired six months prior to you joining the board. This is her first presidency. You have attended several board meetings since your term began, and as a former faculty member of the college, you feel information presented at the meetings is inadequate. You contact the president and request specific reports such as compensation of individual staff members, detail on vendor payment for certain consultants, travel costs for all vice presidents and deans, the complete applications of all candidates that applied for a recently-hired dean position, and you've also made numerous calls to the business vice president asking about the college finances, and you have made several requests to the vice president for information to be sent to you. The president, being new, is eager to please board members and keep excellent relations. So this is what you're gonna talk about, and here's your questions. What are the factors of board governance to be considered in this case? What action, if any, should the president take regarding this board member? What are the, are the actions of the board member proper? And what's the role of the board chair, if any, in relation to this board member? So I'm just gonna give you like, three minutes to talk about it with your partner, and then one of you is gonna report out what you think should be done. You wanna go back to the... Did somebody ask me to do something? Go back to what?
The previous...
The story? Yeah. Yeah. Yes, I know the-- Hey, who wants to go first in this report? Come on, so make your break. Who wants to go first? Go ahead. No, you go ahead. Come on, so make your break. Who wants to go first? Go ahead. No, that's okay. Go. Anybody? Tracy, friends, do you want to go?
That is there.
Okay. Do not--
I'll take, I'll take question number two.
Question number two.
The President needs to-- Chair before, before the Board member's action. The Board member, some of his actions were very valid, some were valid and accepted to-- more administration or improper reputation. The President needs to take that, Chair needs to take action to, to the trustee, not President. Because Presidents--
Yes. Good. Very good points. You want to add something?
No, we were the same thing. Take it to the Board Chair and then they, to determine if the Board wants this information as well and the process on how to proceed, and that they should not be contacting employees or departments directly.
Great. Add anything?
There was nothing wrong with the information that the Board member wanted. It was just the protocols and the steps that they went about taking in order to secure it.
Do you guys all agree with that? There was nothing wrong with the information?
No, some of that information, some of the information he was asking about was specific for certain consultants.
The what now?
It said he was looking for information on certain consultants, not all consultants. So it was kind of a, looking, kind of on a witch hunt for a group of people or certain things. Now, compensation, travel costs for all Vice Presidents and Deans, that's fair, you're going across the whole swath and you're trying to get a, an idea of that.
If there's a reason for it.
But the complete applications of all candidates, that's deep dive into administration.
No.
And remember, it's an individual trustee.
That, that was the, for me, the problem.
Yeah.
With that, and it was the President's role to address it.
To the Chair, not to the trustee. Remember, we said the President, yeah.
Yes, the President of the, the Chairman of the Board.
Right.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I keep on saying just go to the Chair. You have to concur with the other trustees, go to the Chair. So--
We have some Board policies also on travel costs for all Vice Presidents and Deans, and we also have individual, that's, the, the Board ultimately sees all that.
Right.
So it's always, it's the job of the, of the Board Chair to bring it to him, but in reality, we see this at the end.
Right, right.
But we don't--
And it's asking for a separate report to--
Yeah, not a separate, because we're all consensus. We have to ask. So every Board member would have to get--
Right.
The Chair can look at his request and decide, okay, it's fair to bring, say, item number three to the whole Board, and that would be a Chair call. Item number one wasn't clear to us when it said individual staff members. Was that all staff members individually, or was that only certain staff members? Not too sure. So that, that one was iffy.
I, I think the biggest thing here is you have an individual trustee making all kinds of requests and going directly to staff members and making requests. Those, remember that all requests should go through the President? None of them go, you don't go directly to track, to staff. You have one employee. And the President then, because the President needs to know and monitor the workload of the staff. And so, you know, if, if six people are directing the work of the Vice Presidents or Deans, then it just is impossible. Okay? So that's the big thing. He's, the person on the Board is doing the job of the President. The second thing is, there's a question about why? Why do you want individ, I mean, first of all, in California, everybody's salary is public. You can go to California, whatever that site is, and see whatever anybody makes who's in a public entity, okay? Is it true in most, I didn't know that. Okay, thanks. Okay, so, so this is definitely getting into the weeds. It's getting into the detail, and it's an individual trustee requesting the information. How it's handled, I don't know if you have this in your policy or procedure. And again, the best time to write it is when you're doing well, okay? You kind of have an unwritten process that it goes to the, what I heard was, it would, the President would talk to the Chair, the Chair would talk to the trustee, and then if the trustee said, I still want it, then it would come to the whole Board, and the Board would direct whether that, because an individual trustee can still, you have the, you know, you have the right, as a minority trustee, you know, a member of the minority, not the majority of the Board, you have the right to say, no, this is something that's important to me, and I'd like us to talk about it at the Board meeting. And then the Chair puts it on the agenda and says, this information has been requested, these are the reasons I, I discussed it, that, that should not be put forward, but we're bringing it to the full Board. And then you vote, and that's, that's the end of it, and everybody supports the majority decision.
We have that in place. We have future agenda items--
Okay.
So you could ask about this vendor detail on a vendor payment, let's say, and we also have a Board, I believe there's a policy in place that if anything over $50,000, I don't know the exact amount.
But do you have a policy in place for how this is handled if individual trustees are requesting information? This is communications. And I know you have a communication policy, but I didn't see a lot of information in it. So I don't know if you want to add any or not. You're working fine now, but as I said, this is the best time to put some things in writing if you want to. Okay? So, we're going to just summarize key indicators of high-performing individual trustees, okay? Just to recap. Prioritize being a trustee, work as a member of the unit, understand the College and its role, support the College in the pursuit of its mission, understand Board policies and act in accordance with them, exemplify ethical behavior and avoid any conflict of interest, demonstrate integrity, respect, and civility, know the community and represent its interests, but make decisions for the common good, be visionary and thoughtful. And then the last one's covered up. Somebody read it.
It's covered up on ours.
It's on mine. Oh, I can do it, but, no, see, it's covered up by the teleprompter? What is it? Okay, good. I'm glad we, we waited for that because continuous and professional development obviously is really important to all of you. So that's a best practice of individual trustees. As far as high-performing Board summary, upholds basic fiduciary duties of loyalty care and, what was it? My mind, obedience, okay? Operates at the policy level, focuses strategically on the future, creates a culture of inclusion, partnership, collaboration with each other by selecting an effective Board Chair. We didn't talk a whole lot about that, but that's imperative, that your Board Chair understands the role of the Board and, and the evaluation, that was one of your high items, that your, your Board officers know what their, their requirement, their job duties are. Engage in honest, nonjudgmental civil debate and deliberation, vote with your conscious, conscience, no competing interests, respect final Board decisions, establish communication protocols with each other and the CEO, respect, trust, and care about each other, create a culture of partnership and collaboration, and demonstrate a high level of trust and confidence in the CEO, publicly support the CEO, focus on accountability, and assure the College meets the needs of the community it serves. And then I just want to talk for a minute about trust, because that, in any relationship, trust is a key. And I'm going to leave an article for you called "The Importance of Trust," and specifically talking about trust amongst Board members. So on the left of this slide, you see the chances of trusting another person increase to the degree that you're risk tolerant, well-adjusted, similar to the other person, share the same interests, have been the beneficiary of the other's concern, feel the other person is competent, have observed the other person's integrity and predictability, and have open lines of communication. On the opposite side are things that you can do to improve in these areas. The first one, if you're not risk tolerant, step out of your comfort zone and try new things, especially as a trustee, there's a lot of things that you can volunteer to be a part of that might be something that you're not used to doing. If you're not well-adjusted, that one, seek professional help, I don't know, that one you kind of have to take care of. And then, similar to the other person, get to know each other. Most of us, at the bottom line is we're more similar than we're different, and especially you as a Board, because your similarities are your commitment to the College, the commitment to the values and the vision and the mission of the College. So you're already starting with some things that are very much congruent with each other. And then the same thing for number three, share the same interests. And then, being, have been, being the beneficiary of the other person's concern, the, the other part of that is you showing concern. So recognizing contributions, showing appreciation. No matter how accomplished we are, when you say something at a Board meeting and somebody says, wow, that's a really good point, makes you feel good, even though you're not, you know, you, you have a pretty good self-concept, you still feel good when somebody says you did a good job. The, when you, the one for feeling that the other person is competent, if you notice that someone needs help in certain areas, that's where we provide the training, ask questions, probe for understanding, again, give grace, and recognize that everybody brings their own knowledge and expertise. That's the beauty of our Boards of Trustees. We come from different backgrounds and experiences, and we bring them to the table to try to serve the needs of the community and our students. And then the last one, observing the, the other person's integrity, setting adher to behavioral expectations, avoid attacks, place items on the agenda so that people can come be prepared, don't surprise, and model the behavior you want to see in others. Open lines of the communication, look for immunity, opportunities to connect and listen for understanding. So these are all just ways that you can build trust with each other. And we want to move quickly to the Internal Governance Goals. We've talked about a lot of things tonight. You have what you said about yourselves, you have what ACCJC said about you, and you have best practices of high-performing Boards. And what you have done with your Board Goals is, you have written Board Goals that, that pretty much support the work of the institution. And I know these were sent to you, but we also printed them. Can these be sent to the, I mean, print, given to them? And if you look at them, you'll see that they pretty much are about the work of the College and not specifically about Board self-improvement. And that was one of the things that ACCJC said about the Board, that you didn't use the evaluation to try to improve as a Board. Setting some Board Internal Governance Goals would demonstrate that you're taking this seriously and you're trying to improve as an individual trustee and as a Board. And so I, I did look up, researched a couple of places that do have some Internal Governance Goals, so I have a copy of those, and I'd like to give you a chance just to look at them so you can see some ideas of, sorry, some thing, you're getting your exercise tonight, some things that you might want to, some verbiage you might want to use for Board Internal Governance Goals. And remember, the three recommendations up on the, well, I'll let you read just for a second, okay? That's just two samples. So you see how some Boards have said, we can improve as individual trustees and we can improve as a Board, and we're going to commit to doing some things over this next year to make that a reality. And so if you look at what we've talked about tonight, and you look at the three standards that ACCJC has said that you're not meeting, you're not in compliance with, and it has to be answered in the next report to ACCJC, and you, you might be able to come up with some things that you can do to improve in these areas. So the first one, again, just to remind you that you're, you act collectively and that once a Board reaches a decision, you act in support of that decision. And you've already talked about a few things that you've already done to demonstrate that, and you just need to keep modeling that behavior. And then the second one, using the results of your evaluation to improve, setting a couple of Board Goals on some of the areas that you agreed were areas that you can improve would be a great step towards that. And then at the end of the year, whoever you have do your evaluation, you tell them, we want these goals included as items at the end of the regular assessment because we want to see how we're doing on these goals. And you might even say, you know, list a couple of examples of how the Board has demonstrated-- might even say, you know, list a couple of examples of how the board has demonstrated that they're meeting these goals. Make it more than just a rating scale to make you think about what you've actually done, okay? And then the third one, to meet the standard, delegate full responsibility and authority to the CEO to implement and administer board policies without board interference. And I gotta tell you, this is the most difficult one. Everybody who's sitting at this dais is probably a go-getter, a high achiever. If you see a problem, you wanna help solve it, you, you know, and that's hard as a board member, because you're given a lot of information, and you're, you're asked to know this information, but you really aren't being asked to do anything about it, most cases, unless there's a policy level change. So you're, you really have to not allow yourself to interfere in the day-to-day operations of the college and delegate that to the president. And then, there has to be such a relationship between you that when the president feels that, hey, this is kinda moving into my territory, the president can talk to you about it, and if that isn't resolved, follow the process that you've all agreed to, which is to go to the chair, and then it goes from there, okay? So I think that needs a little more discussion, because that part I don't think is written in any of your policies or procedures, and you might wanna clarify that a little bit and come to agreement on it. So, you said in, well, you have your goals, support equitable student access, ensure organizational fiscal health, and then advance board governance. You have those that we just printed for you. And we talked about, um, looking at your priorities on page 45 and seeing if there's anything you might wanna implement from here as a board, add a board goal on, to improve something that was a priority here, and then, and then of course, the standards, if there's anything you can do to improve those. The two things that I talked to you about are, and I hate leaving on this note, but separating internal governance from other policies, but going through the process, having the discussion and coming to a decision on work, what works for you, because there's really not a right or wrong. And if it's working fine, and the board really has authority, if you, if you even just document in there that the board has authority, which they have ultimately, but if the board wants to change one of their own internal governance goals or policies, what's the process? If you can do something with that, if it's important to you to do that. And then, the BP 2305, your annual meeting, the commitment that, that you publicly reaffirm your commitment to the role as a trustee, okay? And I'm stopping, because we have to allow a little bit of time for you to evaluate this presentation tonight and discussion, and the suggestion for the next steps of moving forward on the, the board goals of internal governance. You might do an ad hoc committee to try to draft a few goals and then, and then bring them back to the board for consideration, but that's just one process that you might wanna follow. So, is there any questions or anything anyone? We covered a lot. I appreciate your attention and staying awake through all of the information. And thank you again for the opportunity to be here. So Irene, you take the evaluations and send them directly to Colleen, right? Okay. Okay?
Okay, do you want us to do our evaluation, or do you want us to?
What's that?
Do that. Are we gonna do the evaluation tonight, or?
It's a, it's a check. She sent it to you, right? Colleen sent it to you?
I think we have it.
No, the, their evaluation of the workshop?
I think it's.
Oh, you all have it. Okay, wonderful. So it's not very long. If you can, it makes it easier for you. Yes, and she sends it directly. You can say whatever you wanna say, because I don't see it until it goes to Colleen, okay? Thank you again.
Okay, well, uh, thank you Debbie, Dr. D. Thomas, for leading today's retreat and guiding us through this important discussion. We do appreciate your time, and we, and especially your expertise. And so, with no further business on today's agenda, the special meeting of the desert community, called District Board of Trustees, is adjourned at 8:25 PM.